All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I will call it over to this meeting of the Arlington County Board of Trustees on October 2nd, 2025 at 5:03 PM. Tonight, we have a workshop on our district priorities. This workshop is on marketing and engagement. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Trustees, thank you for your time tonight and for the opportunity for Tyena and our wonderful communications team and family engagement team to spend a little time with you tonight, talk about marketing and engagement. You identified that it is a priority. As you know, we spend workshops diving in deep into some of the work that we do in those priority areas, and tonight is no exception. We'll turn it over to them.
Thanks so much, Dr. Smith. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and really to enhance what you guys have already been seeing, and we want to just really hit on why this is a priority for our district. So you all identified that we really needed to involve families and community members in that student learning, and we like to take it one step further experience. So that student experience is why we're here. How we do this is with an incredible team. So I wanted to introduce those that are in the room and let you know some news within our team. So I've got Ryan Pierce here, who's my left hand. I've got Spence, who's downstairs, who's everyone's left hand. Mackenzie Stokes is also here. That's Spence's right hand, I would say. Suzanne is our senior graphic designer. Kendall is with us this evening. Dorcas is upstairs making sure emails are attended to for me. Cadence is our newest team member right here. And then we have some vacancies. We are currently, as in tomorrow, about to be hiring for our social media manager. We hope we have the right candidates lined up. We also have a senior communication specialist that we're interviewing tomorrow afternoon. So hopefully we can have those positions. And the most important and the most exciting one is the director of marketing. This is part of our NSPR audit as something that they highly recommended for us as a district to look to have as far as our organizational chart within our department. I'm lucky because I also get to have and involve every day in my work Aaron Peralas as the executive director of family and community engagement, and his team members Sean and Eric, who are awesome this morning, they supported us at the PTA meeting. And so it's just great because we've all really worked as one family, and I wanted them to see themselves in that way and for you all to know that we have worked together to tell the story of Arlington ISD. So I truly believe that marketing is actually a comprehensive approach to influencing sentiment. You have to be able to build trust. You have to be able to have visual recognition, almost be second nature. And when you do those items, you're then influencing and becoming and having a great brand, which equals a visually and highly marketable district. And so tonight, you're gonna hear not only how we're starting to do this, but then how we're gonna push that into the next year and the work that we have. So what's new in 2025? I talked to you guys all in June, told you kind of our big landmarks and what we were gonna do as far as transfers, engaging students and opportunities, looking at pre-K and enrollment. Those are our four big pillars that we presented back in June. And since then, we've done other things. We now have a pride team member at every campus. These are principal-appointed positions. They are not paid. They are the cheerleaders, the people who know what's going on already at the campus. So why not just have them be the person that helps us build the bridge to make sure that our communications team knows what's happening? We're very large, and my team has always said, you know, we struggle to get stuff before it happens. We see it on Facebook, and that's great. We're like, man, we wish we could have been there so that we actually could be a part of this. And so those pride team members are going to be our, really, the people that help us walk across that bridge at the campus level. Website, we have been able to, I know Greg's around the corner, but he's been very helpful in helping us create a responsive website, something that makes it easy for our families to go through and navigate. It's still under construction, but it is, I would say, a lot easier already to navigate. Search bar is working better, so I'm gonna tell you guys that. Our latest, and what I'm most proud of, is what our team worked on is a sentiment campaign that's just rolled out September 23rd. I'm gonna play two videos for you. I want to give kudos to Kendall, who really with Ryan's help spearheaded this project from a visual storyboard to picking and selecting students and families to serve as a talent. This has already been, from September 23rd, this campaign has reached 160,000 impressions. It is streaming on YouTube. It is streaming on all kinds of, I would say, streaming opportunities. They were like Pluto, they were naming them off to me, tons of different streaming outlets. But then also, we have remarketing, and then we have YouTube ads. And so we are gonna be running this campaign through various households, 45 years older, because they're just slightly out of touch with maybe their student experience. They know and believe that they have a good district, or they went to Arlington and have stayed here and haven't engaged with us recently, and so they don't know all the opportunities we have. And so I'm gonna play both of these for you. There's two of them, and I want you just to be able to enjoy them for a moment.
Amazing things are happening in Arlington ISD.
In Arlington ISD, every child earns their path to excellence.
Our fine arts programs have earned their recognition for over 15 consecutive years.
I'm not just building the perfect sir.
I'm building character and leadership skills.
Arlington ISD invigorizes my child's future like I do.
More than just a classroom, Arlington ISD. Discover your child's advantage at AISD.net.
And the next one?
Amazing things are happening in Arlington ISD.
In Arlington ISD, we build leaders for tomorrow's community.
Our STEM programs prepare me for careers that don't even exist yet.
Here, I'm not just planning subjects.
I'm just going to remind you.
Arlington ISD doesn't just educate my child, they inspire greatness.
Arlington ISD invigorizes my child's future like I do.
More than just a classroom, Arlington ISD. Discover your child's advantage at AISD.net.
I can't tell you how fun it was to go to those campuses and hear the principals. They were like, we've been selected, the Thornton principal. You know, we had so many different campuses we went to, and they were just, they couldn't believe it. And so we made sure that we had Thornton Elementary in that shot. I wanted people to see how incredibly beautiful that campus was. I wanted people to know that the parents are engaging with the children. So everywhere that touch point is, it really helps. And so this is a sentiment campaign. It'll work really with us. We're working right now to see how we push this into a bilingual and have it also run on Telemundo and our sister streaming channels. And so this is something, since we already have it built, it's very easy for us to replicate into different ways. And I believe Mackenzie's gonna put on social soon, so she's working on how we do some paid social ads. This is about what you see, visual recognition. You've got to see it. We've gotta build on it. And so this is, that sentiment campaign is gonna lead us to all types of things. Kelly Horn took me on a speedy tour. Best hour and a half I spent with him. And we, I think, went to 18 campuses. We drove to this campus, this is Patrick, and we were in Grand Prairie, but nowhere on here did it say that it was Arlington ISD. And so we've gotta tell people, this is an Arlington ISD campus. This is not Grand Prairie ISD. We've got some funding, so he's working with our architect to make sure, and these are mockups, but this is what we want people to see, that name recognition, that validation that we can do. And these are easy updates for us that just start building that into parents and community members to know that these are our campuses. When I've gone to campuses, we were filming this sentiment campaign. Without this, you're just seeing a bank of doors. And we really needed to work on how that welcoming environment was created at our campus. And so when I think of marketing, I think it's all touch points. It's the moment you look us up online. It's the moment you walk into our door. Did we make it easy for you to find the front door? Did we have visitor parking available? Could you easily tell where to go? And so this sign Suzanne's working on, but this will be standardized across the district. It'll tell people where to ring the bell, left side or right side. It's engaging, it's in English and Spanish. It easily outlines what we need for them to recognize that we have a system and a safety protocol, and it starts right here. And so we're working to roll that out. It'll be on top of the doors, and so it'll be actually sticked adhesive to the front of the door so it won't interact or interfere with our film that we have as a safety requirement from the state. But this is exactly the type of thing Kelly was so excited, I mean, we've had how many meetings where we're just excited to have that standardized across the district? And so I'm excited for this. So when we do those things, we create the welcoming environment. We tell people about our schools, and then they feel it. We know everyone is feeling the engagement and the change of the experience that works, really putting on a highlighted effort right now through social. I'm gonna play three quick little reels for you, just so in case you haven't explored on social media, Instagram, that you can see what that looks like anyway. So if you were me right now, you'd see none of smiles. Because everyone of you in here is smiling. It invokes that emotion. That's the sentiment that marketing is bringing that we're trying to change. These are real students. These are real things happening tonight. You'll learn about the Cowboys and how they've selected one of our Arlington ISD students to represent them. And so we've got that partnership. We stared at it all day, but we now are showing that partnership. And we've got to demonstrate that to the community and make that parent say, what's happening over there? What do they get to do? The mind child doesn't get to do. And so these are just a few of the items. Kendall and Cadence, Mackenzie, we have so many ideas in our department. I'm really lucky to have creative minds and that freedom. So that influence is what you hear. When you start seeing things like that, it influences what you hear about our community. And that is what you hear about what's happening in the classroom, engaging student learning in the community, and even in the new. Small things like a sign right here. This is an element of marketing. This is pride. This is building that employee pride, buying a sign that we told principals, hey, we've got them. We've got two sets. If you want one, email us. We'll put you on the calendar while someone come install it. I have had principals before I walked out of there. I would like it on May 1st for Principals Month. I would like it when I highlight them on World Teacher Day. I had people already just wanting to have that displayed because they don't have that funding from their campus level. And so we want to make sure that we're still giving them that opportunity to have that opportunity there. One of my favorite things is we implemented a district download community newsletter. And this is a quick turn. Hopefully you guys all receive it. It's got a lot of data. It's really bringing our community into our campus and into our district and how they can sign up and help. And then Matt and I, we did a tour of all the media outlets. Either he and I together or myself went to visit everyone and just opened that door and say, hey, we're Arlington ISD. What do you need from us to make it easy? What can we do for you? How can we partner? And this is where my new best friend right here, NBC Five, I'm not kidding, Wayne Carter and I are pretty close. He texts me like his dinner recipes and helps me out with my apartment hunt. But you know, Wayne told us, I have never been able to do a card in the classroom in Arlington, and I've never been able to work with your district. Now, I think Matt even featured twice, and he just calls upon us and says like, hey, I want Matt's perspective on this. And then he also says, hey, how can we cover these stories for you? So he's just as eager now to cover us, and we've built that relationship. This is from CBS 11. This is Kerrigan. She's actually this week competing right now in New Delhi for the World Paralympics. This story, Ryan helped facilitate the story, and the reporter was so excited and connected with us that the story now has been picked up by CBS National. And the reporter reached back out to Aaron, sorry, to Ryan, with like eight exclamation points and was like, we've been up now, CBS National's picked up this story. And so that pride and that connection that we built are really just by opening the doors with a media tour. So that leads us to what our families feel, and I'm gonna ask Aaron Peralas, who is our executive director of family and community engagement, to join us to really talk about this, as his work is very passionately tied towards how people feel when they enter our campuses.
All right, so when we talk about what we hear and what we see, we as humans, we lean into our five senses to build that condition of emotional response, right? And so as we do that, we want to make sure that we're being effective and helping create that sense of belonging for our families and students when they come into the building. I can remember when I was a campus principal, sitting down, it was a large elementary campus, and visitors would come in from either the district or the community and say, Aaron, there's a certain feeling in your building. How did you do that? And I'd just look at them and say, it's magic. But we know it's not magic. It takes hard work, right? And a lot of what behind that has to do with this concept of customer service, right? And we want to create a welcoming environment, but how are we helping our staff understand how to get from point A to point B to create that feeling that we want our community to feel? And so you might remember that last school year, we launched the family engagement framework for campuses. And we talked about effective two-way communication, homeschool connections, and degree of engagement of every family. But we said the foundation and the base that helps all that to happen is creating a welcoming environment. So in doing so, we have been taking the show on the road and interacting with certain role positions and staff members and talking about customer service. Signor Roberto, he was in the room right here, he was instrumental in allowing his entire clerical staff with their supervisors go through not one, but part two of our customer service training this spring, where we got to train the entirety of the business office on the tenets of customer service. And so when we talk about those tenets, we're talking about the concepts of accessibility, tangibles, responsiveness, responsibility. But the cornerstone of this training and what we want to be as a district is this concept of empathy. How do we create empathy in that interaction every single day for every student, every staff member, and every community member and family member that comes upon our path? And so this past, two weeks ago, we were able to train up to 75 campus clerks, get them updated on the staff training. Prior to that, at Administrative Leadership Institute, we were able to do a mini-training for campus principals to give them an idea of what we're working on. And we're looking forward for the rest of the school year to be able to come into contact with other position roles and share this message of customer service. And so right here, this is a picture of Gary Rodriguez, who's actually our DAS Outreach facilitator, who's delivering the training, the customer service training. So we're building the capacity of our team to be able to share this message. And so when we go, so what you feel when interacting with a campus. And so again, we want to be able to paint the picture of expectation, of the story, of how we want folks to feel every single time they walk into our campuses, but not just at our campuses, every district facility, this administration building, the Center for Family and Community Engagement, and all of the other facilities that our families come into contact with us. And so as we go through this journey, I think Tyena's gonna take it.
So we've got our first opportunity for some feedback from you all. You, as board members, visit campuses often, and so you have some of these experiences or you hear from community members, what maybe they heard and saw in the front office. This could be a point to be improvement. This could be something that is done really well, and you know the campus is already working on items. And so we'd like for you, I'm gonna give everyone about five minutes, a table talk. You have some large cards in front of you. And so share with us what those items are. If you know specifically, if maybe it is, there's no, it's hard to get to this campus's front door. Or when I go there, I always notice that so-and-so is smiling. Or there's sometimes that, you know, you ring, but sometimes you don't ring the front door. We want to hear that because the way we can help with building that and influencing and really customizing Aaron's team's training is to get that feedback from you all. So start first, I'm gonna give everyone five minutes, and one person will share out what you guys felt was one of the most important things to listen to. Brooklyn?
Welcome you. Welcome your feedback and share with the team. I'm happy to hear your strike.
Me too.
Yes, I'm here.
I just want to, you know, I know a lot of discussion. My team is gonna collect this feedback, and we're gonna meet afterwards, but share just some of the highlights that you all heard from your individual conversations at your table. Anyone wanna start?
Yeah, we can start. So a couple of the highlights, limiting the gossip or the utilization of the front office as like the water cooler area for staff to come and chit chat and vent inside conversations when it smells good and it's tidy, but not like overbearing smell goods, like try to freshen smell, right?
Okay.
So breath of fresh air. Lighting, obviously. Being acknowledged, I think, was a big one. Even if you walk in, we're self-aware enough to know that they could be busy, but sometimes they don't acknowledge you with like the eyes or a smile. Paying attention if you call into the school, that they're listening and remembering who you are on the phone and maybe not mumbling and speaking clearly. Curb appeal was one that was brought up.
The doorbell.
The doorbell, but you had that on there, so we, yeah. Those are the highlights, I think.
What about mine at your table?
So I'll try to hit the things that they didn't talk about as a group. We designated parking for the visitors was a big one, making sure that there's eye contact, I think you said, with the visitors when they come. A standardized process for the visitor experience when they check in, i.e. signing in, should be the same. The curb appeal, deep clutter, I think is where we used for the front office was there. And then adding Arlington ISD to all of our marketing purposes.
We love that.
That was a good one there. So grounds, yeah.
Do you guys wanna go?
Okay. We talked about phone tone, so just the tone and welcoming aspect of when you call and what they say, it matters. And that same thing translates to when you visit the office as well, is, y'all mentioned it, eye contact and actually treating you like you're welcome in that office setting. Sometimes it's a little bit of a challenge. Chaos in the office, sometimes we know offices are busy places, but I think it's probably a really good idea to take the chaos out of the front office if you have visitors coming into the office because while we might deal with it on a regular basis, and it's normal, nothing big, for somebody who doesn't deal with it on a regular basis, their perception of the school might be, it's chaotic here all the time, what's happening around here? And then I think there were a couple specific schools that were brought up, just about access to the office itself. We have some differing protocols where you have one campus where you buzz in and they actually don't even let you into the office. They just keep you in that little waiting area outside, and they come outside to talk to you, and just the way that makes you feel as a parent or patron, that when you're hiding behind those doors, why can't I come into the office if you're buzzing me into the school? So some consistency and expectations about what access really means.
Just one about you guys.
Not a whole lot to differ from what I was already saying. I will add on to Matt, I had the flip side of what Matt said, which is, some places you come in and they may make you wait, and then some places, you know, I come in and it's just like, as soon as I hit the button, I get buzzed in, and then I get buzzed right through the second one. So like, there's no waiting, because they're like, it's a flip side of being welcome, but also balancing security. We talked about maybe standardized as a way that we welcome people, different how the attitude comes across when you two go in. But yeah, I think we're all kind of on the same.
I appreciate that, and these are all great and valuable things that really are just about how we change small things to make a big impact. So really, what we want to do is what we know, once this customer service training has begun and been implemented and becomes a practice, that we are changing the sentiment right there, the very top. We know that that equals our brand. Someone feels welcomed, they're like, oh, I love going to that campus, or I always volunteer at this campus because it's welcoming, it's easy. And so we feel like that work is the foundation. We need to start there, and really, once we have our strategic plan, that will then guide how our marketing is enhanced. Because until we have the bottom, until we have the foundation laid and we feel confident in that, we really can't just say, hey, come to Arlington ISD, because when they come, they might not feel connected or unwelcome or appreciated, or like they have an experience that they can be and connect with our district. So we're excited for this work, what Aaron's team is doing already, because it's gonna influence our audiences. What's interesting is we've been studying our audiences. We've been studying our current families. We've looked at potential families. What are they getting and receiving? What are they looking at? What's working? How are they being marketed to? Whether it's traditional mail, whether it is just targeted. And so we've also looked at our community stakeholders. We've just started our stakeholder meetings, and they have been night and day different. If you haven't joined us, please come. I know we had Brooklyn and Justin able to join us at the last one, and the feedback to me was just chilling, like they were so excited to be engaged at the CTC Center, to be able to see the programs, to interact with the children. And so those are all things that we're using because marketing is all the time. It's not just during a campaign. It's year-round, it's every touch point. It's making sure that we're constantly hammering that into what we do, and it's intentional. Where we struggle the most is our current employees. And I'll tell you, I've heard that from the day I walked in, I've heard it from before I walked in, I've heard it as I've been here, and it's been something that we've been working on. So as a team, we know that we need to start working on this audience. We're gonna launch an HR Instagram page because our employees need a place to connect as employees and have a place of belonging in the district, just as much as our students do. So our team members have worked on, we're gonna turn your attention to the other side of the room, to present to you some ideas as we, or they're all gonna stand up and present together because this is a really big thing. We've worked to make sure that we are working together. And I'd say as a department and a team, I've kind of assigned each of them, but these are ideas, and so they're gonna pitch them to you. And these pitches, I want you to think about, think about how they could be beneficial, how they could have a high ROI for us, what would be unique, what maybe would work in Arlington versus what wouldn't. And at the end of the presentations, you will have an opportunity to put your dots you have. You can vote for three. You can also put all of your dots on one if you feel that passionately about it. And we think that by starting this, we want to gauge, so I'm gonna turn it over to the team as they work with each other to present your, our pitches to you.
Yes, and also just saying with the dots, I know they're all different colors, it doesn't mean anything. So I put the dots on whichever ones that you like. Or this one, which is the Arlington ISD mentorship program. So work with me, be my mentee. This is all about our current employees and potential employees. How are we bringing them in? How are we going to build those authentic relationships, cultivate future talent, amplifying our brand, and attracting purpose-driven individuals? This is also gonna create a ripple effect. So by pouring into our current employees, having those mentors for our new employees, it's going to bring them in and really show them that we're investing in them and we're leaders here, and we're going to continue throughout their entire time with us in the district. As you know, I've been here about a month, and I know that this would be very beneficial. I know having that person to look up to with those questions to really guide you through the process of coming into the district is very beneficial, so it just stickers on this.
We acknowledge that this is, we already have a teacher mentorship program and a principal, but we're talking about all employees.
Yes, this is going to be across every department. So like, by filling out a Google form is how we're gonna connect our mentors with our mentees. So this is going to really attract and create that ripple effect that we want here in Arlington ISD.
Thank you. That's a good idea.
So another idea that the team came up with is Arlington ISD staff bingo. So with this, the purpose would be for our employees to really connect, collaborate, get to meet new people beyond their own role, their school, from their department. So this is a little example that I came up with, an example bingo card. So the idea for this is we could send this out in the employee newsletter, maybe even switch it up throughout the year. So maybe it would be themed to a holiday, or maybe it would be themed to a different sport, just to switch it up. And so the way that they would play, so there are a bunch of different little activities that they would go around in their community and kind of complete. So for example, have one with a new staff member, introduce yourself to a new employee, learn about someone else's job, find a colleague who's been in the district for 10-plus years, share an Instagram story with your work bestie and tag Arlington ISD. If you have any ideas of a theme or maybe a different activity, you could post it noted and stick it up there too and share your ideas. So of course, we would also have some winners, so maybe that would be a row first, and then maybe it would be X next, and X get harder for every time, right? Maybe they have to do the border, so they would get some swag. And then of course, too, to kind of stamp their bingo card, they would have to take a picture of them finishing the activity. So after that, we could share our social pictures and all the things that they went and did across the shirt. So yeah, just a fun way for everyone to get out there. And Ms. Mackenzie?
Hello. Okay, so you might be wondering how this picture came to you. It's a story. Let me tell you, first day of school, Sean and I, this is Sean Bass, we worked at Joey Rodriguez Junior High, and we were there together. And that was the first time we've ever worked together by ourselves. And we became instantly F and S. I love him. He is so cool. So we were like, we have to get a picture today. And if you don't know Sean, he's about nine feet tall. So I'm like, you need to sit down. And then Spence, being Spence, posed us, and then we ended up looking like a 1980s Old Mill. Of course, I had him run with that, put this on the background. But I do want to note, in Arlington ISD, we do not use Old Mill. Spence Mills. So I sent it out to the team as a joke, just for fun, and everybody went crazy and loved it. And then Ms. T loved it so much, she's like, we need to do this district, why? And thus, Work Besties was. So it's more than just fun photos, though. It's about building camaraderie, bonding, building that culture, having some fun and bragging rights. And personally, I believe that happy employees equal great customer service for our families. I think that's an important thing. So here's how it works. They'll submit their picture and their description of why this person's their bestie via Google Form. person's our bestie via Google Form Communications, will then post it on the new HR Instagram account. And if they get posted, they'll get some of this cool new swag. And I know what you're thinking, swag, I thought the same thing, but this is some good swag. These songs right here, I'm waiting, I'm going to wear them to every single board meeting once a week. They are very good. So, in conclusion, Work Besties is about having fun, pushing the rap, building that culture, and showing off the people that really do make AISD shine, sorry, Arlington ISD shine. And now, I want to introduce you to, if excellence, integrity, and dedication had a face, it would be this person. Please, let me introduce you to the one, be only Ryan T.
I think Spence is the only person in Arlington ISD who knows every other person in Arlington ISD. Most of us only know a small fraction of it, more than 8,000 people who work here. I mean, there's departments, whole departments that a lot of people who work here don't even know exist, much less know what they do. And I'm, that's funny, but it's real, but it's true. So our idea, it's a simple idea, lunch and learn, round brag, but the idea is to give employees a more holistic understanding of what goes on in the district, and to bring people together, feel cohesion. So if an apartment or school could host a lunch and learn, anybody from the district can come, spend an hour, get to know some of the people in that apartment or other than school, maybe see a new location they've never been to, just get to know each other and really understand the district more. We want to feel cohesion, we want to develop friendships, more connections. I know from experience, when I meet somebody from another apartment or school and find out how they're impacting kids, it's really inspiring, it's really motivational. I've had a lot of time to approach somebody, not especially more, but early on, I meet somebody I didn't even know we did that in Arlington ISD, it's really cool. So that's kind of the idea of lunch and learn.
So you've heard four awesome ideas. They're open to answer any questions you may have, but I'd like for you guys to pick one that you want to put all your dots on, it doesn't need no color, I'll give you guys some time. If you have some bingo ideas, I know Kendall is ready to take them and actually put them on some post-it notes, so we'd love to engage with you all about how we can really market to our current employees. This will help us build that camaraderie that we're looking to when we talk about culture, sentiment, and making this a place where people love to be. So let you guys go and explore the different ideas with the dots under there, we all have three dots.
Can we put more than one dot on one idea?
Yes, you can.
Do you want me to put three dots? I'll look for you wherever you want me to.
There's one final activity, and really I want to kind of chat with you all intimately before we ask you for this last part. So this past week in Board Bulletin, I gave you all access to a document that's what I call a battle card document. And it's something that is still in the development, and it's in the process of being created to be a five-by-seven card of some type. And the goal is, is that we know educational school savings accounts are coming, and we know that that application will open in January to families, that was just recently announced. So how do we get ahead of that? How do we now go to the next chapter? We've built sentiment, we've worked on customer service, but the reality is, there are 87 private and charter schools within 10 miles of our district, and that makes us a target. That makes our families a target. They put a dollar sign over the head and everyone is running towards it. So we're working to build that battle card document, train and talk to principals about what it means to be an Arlington ISD student and family. Hey, if someone tells you they want to go to X school, let me tell you, actually, did you know that some of those campuses are actually DHD campuses? That Johnny is not going to receive the same access to his learning, to help him with his learning, because they don't have to provide this and we do. Do you know that we have these athletic opportunities or an auditorium? And so trying to build out this document has been something that Matt has really shared with me from the get-go. You know, we know that this is coming, we're working on this, and so when we talk about what our parents are about to be inundated with, it's this, they're going to get from everywhere, and it's going to look sparkling and shiny, and it's going to have their name on it. And so we're working, we've got items in production that we're working to make sure that we also have just as much. We've got awesome sticker packs, we have tattoos, we have socks, we have things that we know will be for pre-K events, it'll be for exploring Arlington ISD, we've got things to put our name and put ourselves out there. Fun items like that, but the reality is, we need to make sure we're always talking about the academic success of our campuses, the programmings, the offerings that we have right here in our district. And so that document hopefully comes to fruition by the end of October when we present it, and we work to have those conversations and train up our front office staff, because we need to be ready for the conversation. We have to be skilled, and if you're not good at talking to a parent and saying, "Well, I'm ready to take this, you know, child out and I'm going to go there," let me coach them to talk and have that conversation. So the battle card document you saw is really just how we're starting to build that within our principals, our front office staff, our counseling staff, our Spence families, they want to be catered to. So we just have to be able to know the facts. So that document is something that we'll use in our battle, which is coming up, it's on the horizon. And so as we do that, all of you have incredible followings on social media, and we need your commitment. I would love for you all to pledge, what is something you will do with us, whether that's in collaboration with us, whether that's an op-ed, whether that is focusing on schools that you're visiting that are right now in the middle of a C or a D, and making sure you're tagging and highlighting the great things happening at those campuses. Because we can't do this alone. You guys all have your own followings, we're reaching people, but there are people that turn to you, and so we're asking you tonight to pledge, what will you do in partnership with us to tell this story and help us with our battle within the next 90 days? Because it is going to get very real, and these are conversations that families or public or community are going to come to you and talk about. And I know you all are all comfortable talking about that, that's why we want you guys to pledge to work with us. We want to, whether that's partner, spotlight, make a video, go with YouTube something and record a certain reel that you think will be impactful or that maybe an underserved population or program. Share that idea with us, we will make sure that we do our part to support you all in whatever that pledge may be. And if you need help writing something, if you need help filming something, taking certain pictures, tell us what it is. So I'd ask you, and I'm going to give you guys about four minutes before we close out, to write that pledge down and really think about it, be intentional about how it can also help us with the battle that's coming up. So everyone, every team member should have a picture of the cards, we can work on that. If other people made a pledge, please take a picture of that. Going to make sure we keep our intention.
All right, we're rounding back up. Thank you, Brooklyn.
Thank you, Brooklyn. I just want to ask really quickly, Melody, what was your pledge? Would you mind reading it and sharing it?
Yes, I pledge to visit more campuses and highlight the good things that are going on, and make it a habit to post more on Facebook about Arlington ISD.
Thank you. You were very quick to write down your pledge, and so I feel like it was just on your mind. And you wrote so fast, it was like, "Oh, I want to know what that was." Melody, what was yours?
Oh, mine's, Sarah.
Sorry, Sarah.
I pledge to visit multiple campuses in fall and spring and post positive, specific praise for each school on my trustee Facebook page. I will follow staff's recommendation as to what schools I should visit, and also try to visit the schools that I haven't been to in a while or at all. Because it's already my fourth year on the board, I've covered most campuses, there are some that I've been to multiple times, but I really want to make sure I cover the whole school district.
David, what was yours?
I'm open to doing whatever needs to be done.
Okay.
Ask, ye shall receive.
Means we can have some fun. I love that. Okay. Justin, you wrote a long one, but I wanted to...
Yeah, it goes basically that.
Sorry, Brooklyn, sorry, Brooklyn.
You forgot Brooklyn. So Brooklyn said that she wants to work with us to specifically target schools, she mentioned the visits that she and Larry often do together, and that we can actually work in better tandem to say, "Hey, we need some love for these schools, here's a list of those schools, maybe those are where they go visit," and we try and make sure we highlight some of the highlights there when they're taking their pictures and stuff. And then the second thing that she mentioned is the idea of, and it kind of goes with these things up here, but just the ability to catch people being good and highlighting it. And sometimes you see like forms in different places that people can fill out, I know Baylor's gotten light, has one of those things, like caught you being good. And that idea of just being able to highlight the values, the beliefs, the behaviors, whatever it is, for our school district that can make people feel, and having our trustees do that would be a big deal.
I can, that form, I can see it in the light. Are you going to say something?
No, we'll talk about it up later.
Write it down, write it down. Justin?
I had pretty much the same statement, I said, "Whatever y'all need, I'm down to help with." I used to write updates more often, I haven't done that since I've been on the board, and just whatever.
Thank you. Steven, I just want to shout yours out as a cabinet member because I loved it. Steven says he's going to open up a work Instagram account.
Yes!
So I love that, he can engage with us.
Really?
That's awesome.
You can't say things in front of her. Or send her pictures.
Go for it, Larry.
Said, "I pledge to be more proactive with video and social media to highlight the schools I visit in Arlington, to counter the perceptions of the district, to include, bring community members to visits to highlight what we do."
I love that, I love that. Yes. Leverage PTA family and volunteer relationships to hype up and celebrate the good already happening, and then committing to have the hard conversations about perceptions of the district, and then following up for that. Thank you all so much, I really appreciate that, and I know my team loves to hear that because we know we've got an uphill battle coming. So our goal right now every day is we're celebrating a win. We know it's out there, that's easy. Celebrate one win a day, and we're in good, good shape. How we market that beyond that is where we come in with some pizzazz and some, you know, glitter, people always say I'm a glitter bomber, you know, I always have sometimes a streamer, because you never know when you have an idea, so like, go grab it and let's just celebrate right in that moment. And so I hope you've seen how our entire, our department works in a different way. We're working really always to say, "What emotion does that invoke? What story does that tell? How does it help us counter the conversations we know are coming?" We're working in a more collaborative manner, we're working to make sure that we're enjoying and then cross-training and bringing people up within our department. So I'm so glad you got to learn a little bit about how we are working to really enhance our marketing, but then also what's coming for the future. So well, Michael Hill has already said he'll be playing bingo, and he said he would what? He knows, and that's exactly what we want, we want people to see us as relatable, we want them to see to the district they choose, we want them to know and know that we're committed to their student experiences and bringing that to life. So thank you for your time, your input, sharing with us, it really helps us as a team and an apartment to make sure that we're moving the needle in the right way, and we'll make sure that we give Michael, do we know who the dot winner was?
I think it was Cadence.
Okay, work with me, be my mentee, so that's awesome. You'll see this come to light probably in the second half of the fall, so we'll start with this, and we appreciate you all weighing in and thank you for your time this evening.
We're super proud of our Collins team and the work that they're doing, hope you all see it, feel it, and hear it, right? At Collins, coming on three. See it, feel it, and hear it, and appreciate their exceptional work.
It is 6:05, and at this time, we will reset, reconvene in a closed session in the board chambers pursuant to sections 551.071 through 551.084 and 551.089 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act and the topics set forth on our agenda. We are now moving to closed.